We'll call the July 8th, 2021 meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 AM.
PM.
PM. Well, it's been that kind of day for me. So, will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to see people back in the council chambers after many months of not being here or no one here. So, welcome, all of you. Roll call, absent is Anthony. It's only Commissioner absent tonight. And are there any additions to our deletions from the agenda, Stacy?
No, there are not.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 24th, 2021?
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, it's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Eliana, that we approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June 24th, 2021. Signify your vote on the screen. And that passes unanimously. All right. Next item is a public hearing on the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Amendment 2. Before we start, I would like to note that we take our roles very seriously up here. And we are here to kind of act in a quasi judicial manner to evaluate the proposals before us and the testimony that we hear. And we take those roles very seriously. Does anyone, I guess we'll start it at 7:02. Is there any potential conflict of interest to be stated? Nope?
No.
Are there any site visits?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on. I guess this is presented by Stacy. Stacy, we're all yours.
All right. Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission members. As just stated, this is the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Second Amendment. So, the subject site is located south of Pine Lane, west of Parker Road, north of Ponderosa Drive, and east of 20 Mile Road. The town is proposing to amend the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Guide to expand the permitted uses within the open space planning area to include parks, playgrounds, and other outdoor recreation uses. The proposed PD amendment would allow improvements on a portion of Track Day of the Parker Auto Plaza subdivision, or the area in green on this map, which would include the development of a park that would be open to the public and directly accessible from the Baldwin Gulch Trail. The park would be constructed in association with a proposed multifamily residential development located directly to the north. Town staff has been working with the multifamily property owner to use approximately one acre of the Baldwin Gulch open space, or Track Day, as a park site. In order to achieve this, the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Guide needs to be amended to allow for active recreation uses. In addition, if approved, the multifamily property owner will be required to pay all costs associated with the construction of the park improvements, would pay a usage fee to the town of Parker, make all park improvements available to the public, and would maintain all park improvements. So, the subject property is located within the central commercial corridor area as designated by the Parker 2035 Master Plan. This area is intended to provide commercial uses which focus on retail services, lodging, restaurants, entertainment, and to a lesser extent, multifamily. The requested rezoning will allow for active uses to be installed along the Baldwin Gulch open space to serve the residential property to the north, as well as visitors of the commercial and traveling along the trail. Strategy 1 in Chapter 13, Open Space and Recreation of the Parker 2035 Master Plan recommends providing adequate parks and recreational facilities and programs to serve the diverse and changing needs of the community. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning. These criteria ensure that a need exists, the proposal is consistent with the master plan, and there are adequate services to serve the proposed site. After evaluating the zoning information, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine approval criteria set forth within the land development ordinance. So, staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, all notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommend, Town Council approve the Parker Auto Plaza Plan Development Second Amendment. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Stacy?
Yes, Stacy, one question. You know, I've been by that area many times in the past, and I know there's a small parking lot in that area. So, that's going to remain there, correct?
Yes.
Is it going to be enlarged or stay the same as it is now?
Yeah, so the parking lot is actually on the south side of the Baldwin Gulch, and that will remain the same, and that will remain as is.
How many parking spots are there, you know?
I'm guessing there's probably about 20.
Okay. All right. That's all I had.
I have a couple. So, and maybe I was looking at my packet wrong. So, it looks like the parking area for the public will be off of, is it?
Ponderosa.
Yeah. Okay. I was wondering about the amount of spots. And we'll guess, so you can access the Baldwin Gulch Trail directly from this parcel?
You can. So, on the screen in that green area, you can see to the north, or to the top of the picture, is the multifamily development. Over, if you're looking at it to the right-hand side, there is a connection that will access this property directly. It's also the Baldwin Gulch Trail goes under Parker Road to the east side and continues over to the Cherry Creek Trail as well.
Okay. And then I just have one other question. What, are there any obligatory amenities for this park, or is it just kind of some open spacey along the trail?
So, with, as stated, the property to the north is a multifamily development. Within our town code, you're required to provide so much park space per number of residential units. And so, within that park space, there's so many amenities that have to be required per new park dedication standards. So, some of those are on this site. We've asked them to enhance it. So, they have some workout stations, some benches, pet waste stations, there's a playground, and then they're activating a little area with artificial turf. Everything in this area, it will not be living. It'll either be native seed or artificial, just because of watering restrictions next to the gulch.
When is the expected completion?
I would say that the earliest completion of this would be next, late next summer, early fall.
How does the allowing of a developer to use current open space affect other open space adjacent to other developers?
So, this is something the town has allowed previously, not to this extent, but we have allowed, there's other subdivisions where the town owns the open space adjacent and has allowed developers to put parks in there, used it for benches and those sort of things. So, it's not unheard of. But because the Parker Auto Plaza where the Baldwin Gulch open space is, was restricted mostly to passive recreation, a trail was pretty much the permitted uses. That's why we're rezoning it to allow for the active. But to answer your question, we've done it in the past. It's not something that the town would probably just allow willy-nilly, but it is something on a case-by-case basis where it activates this trail, the existing trail in this area is not activated, it's not a highly-used trail. And so, by putting these amenities there, we think we could also attract people to start using this trail a little bit more and getting more visitors here.
And the amenities that are shown in green, those are the currently approved amenities that are going to fulfill the requirements that are, so that's what we can expect to actually see?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any ongoing controls for the town if, you know, the park deteriorates? I know it's the owner that's going to be maintaining it, but can you talk to that?
Yeah. So, in order to use town-owned property, the developer will have to enter into a license agreement where they agree that they're going to be, they won't own this land, they're just going to be maintaining it. And they have a maintenance schedule that will be part of that, that'll talk about when they have to pick up the trash from the trash cans and the pet waste, how often they're going to inspect the playground equipment, and if something deteriorates on the playground equipment, what are their plans in place to close it down so the public doesn't use it or get hurt. So, we have a maintenance schedule in place that will be a part of that license agreement that they have to go to.
So, then if somebody gets hurt on one of these, and it's town-owned land, who has the liability? Or who carries the insurance maybe to cover that? Is that town?
That is a legal question.
Okay.
And I'm not exactly sure.
They have to provide liability.
So, they do have to provide liability insurance for that.
Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
That's a good question, Eric.
Nice.
Yeah, hold on. The other question I had was regarding accessing between the blue area and the green area on your map. The blue area is, I would assume, primarily intended for the residents of the multi-tenant buildings. However, is there going to be access between, free access between that blue area and the red area, or is that gated? Or how is that, how is that handled? Is there, I know there's a very big, it's a ditch.
Yeah.
So, how do you get up and down? How would they access this, et cetera?
So, there is another access point up from the green to the blue, kind of where it narrows. You'll see where it says pet waste station. There's another access point there. There's a trail that goes around their detention basin. And so, there is free access. It is not gated. It's pretty much open access to anyone. That's one of the benefits the town sees with this development is that it will, it's open to the public, and the public can utilize it, but we're not paying for it.
Okay, so there is an expectation that members of the public who do not live in those units could use that space for walking their pets. And there's also a fenced dog park in orange. Is that also going to be available to the public?
That one will be fenced off and will be key card.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Okay. That kind of completes the question part of that. The next part of the meeting is the public comment, portion of the meeting. And, you know, again, we appreciate the attendance of the people tonight and the people online. And we appreciate the public participation. And the public hearing is where we listen to comments, concerns, technical analysis, and other information provided by town staff, the developer, and the public. The information combined with the requirements of the land development ordinance, state and federal laws, allow Planning Commission to remain objective, fair, and balanced while making a recommendation or taking action. Simply put, the Planning Commission is required by law to remain impartial and ensure each project, the developer, town staff, and overall community gets the due process it deserves. And so, this is the public comment portion of the meeting, where if you wish to make a public comment on this item before us, you would step to the podium. You have three minutes. We, quite often, members of the public have questions. Those questions are noted by a member of the staff, and then following the public comment period, we respond to those questions as appropriate. And so, we will now open this item to public comment. If you have a public, if you have a comment, please step forward to the podium.
Or Facebook.
Or Facebook, yeah, not Facebook, Zoom.
Zoom.
Do we have any comments or hands up?
If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Okay. Appears we have nobody stepping forward, so we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Do we have any further questions for Stacy?
No.
No.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing at 7:14 and have Commissioner discussion. Discuss away.
I'm in support. I really like the activation of that trail, and I certainly like who carries the cost and the burden of that as they do it, so I'm in support.
I think it's a great idea. Good use of land.
Yeah, I think it's a great feature to add to this area, especially for the multifamilies that are going to be in that area, or when that home, when those homes are built, so I'll be supporting it.
And I appreciate finding creative solutions that benefit, so it becomes a win-win situation. And I'm happy that the staff, the developer, were able to work this out.
And I would concur with my fellow commissioners. It looks like a good use of the land. So, do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the zoning.
I second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Ruth Ann, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the zoning. Please indicate your vote on the screen. And that passes unanimously. All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Stacy. The next item, Item 7B, is also a public hearing. And it is a public hearing on the sketch plan Segment 1 and the preliminary plan Segment 1A. And we will open the public hearing at 7:16. And Brianna, welcome.
Thank you. Perfect. Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission. As stated, this is a proposal for a sketch and preliminary plan for Anthology North. The subject property is located on the south side of Hess Road between Chambers Road and Matzenbacher Road. The applicant PCS Group is requesting the approval of the sketch plan for Segment 1A, 1B, and 1C, and the preliminary plan for Segment 1A of the Anthology North Development. The sketch plan application for all of Segment 1 is for 1,532 residential lots, 109 acres of open space, and 44 acres of park space. The preliminary plan for Segment 1A, located in blue on the map, includes 441 single-family residential lots, 53 townhome residential lots, 47 acres of open space, and 37 acres of park space. Future preliminary plans for Segment B, 1B, and 1C will accommodate the remaining units and acreage outlined in the sketch plan. The proposed preliminary plan identifies the layout of the subdivision to meet the standards outlined in the Land Development Ordinance, the Anthology North Plan Development, and the related roadway and stormwater design criteria manuals. The annexation agreement for the Anthology North Development also outlines the amount of park, open space, trails, and school land dedications required. For Segment 1A preliminary plan, the applicant is proposing a total of 37.19 acres of park space, shown in the red-hatched areas, which exceeds the minimum amount of the park space required. This includes a 31.38-acre community park that will be dedicated to the town. The applicant is proposing 47.92 acres of open space, which satisfies the minimum requirements of open space. Trail systems are proposed to provide connectivity throughout the development. The proposed trails will link with sidewalks and trails constructed within the neighboring subdivisions, which will provide a connection to the Cherry Creek Trail. The proposed preliminary plan for Segment 1A meets the obligations outlined in the approved Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan for the Anthology North Development. As outlined in the annexation agreement, the developer will be required to provide one school site. This will be preliminary planned with Segment 1B at a future date. Segment 1A of the Anthology North Development will be served by Stro Road and Chambers Road extensions shown in red. These extensions provide connections to the existing infrastructure and roadway network as outlined in the town's transportation master plan. A series of new collector roads and extensions of existing collector roads will be constructed to support connections throughout the community and between arterial roads, which are shown in blue. Staff has received calls from town residents concerning the fire station location found in Segment 3 of Anthology North. The applicant has submitted a rezoning application to move the fire station to a new location in Segment 2 away from the current residence. This application is currently in review, and staff hopes to bring this rezoning application to Planning Commission for consideration within a few months. Staff has reviewed the proposal and, as outlined in the staff's report, has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. The project meets the minimum requirements of the land development ordinance and the Anthology North Plan Development. This project provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, and all referral agency comments have been addressed, and the public knows requirements have been met. Staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Anthology North sketch plan for Segment, for all of Segment 1, and the preliminary plan for Segment 1A, subject to the condition listed in staff's report. Staff is available for any questions Planning Commissioners may have, and the applicant is also present to answer questions and would like to give a presentation for you at this time.
Okay, first, questions for Brianna?
No.
No.
Okay. The applicant wished to make a presentation. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Is this?
Not.
There we go. Good evening, John Prestwich with PCS Group, 200 Kalamath Street, Denver, Colorado, 80223. First off, big thanks to Brianna and really all the town staff for their help getting us here this evening. We're excited to be back in person. One thing I did want to point out, we've actually, while the community is currently known as Anthology, we have, we're in the process of renaming the community to Tantera. And we felt like that name really fits nicely with the way the design has evolved, with preserving the drainage corridors and the natural vegetation in the corridors. Do I flip, or do I ask you to flip? Thank you. So, we're big believers in collaboration. We truly recognize that it takes a team to put together a successful application, and I always want to acknowledge the effort it takes for the creation of a new community here in the town of Parker. This slide highlights many of the team members that have helped us get to this point this evening. And again, I also want to recognize all of the input that town staff has provided as we've worked together throughout this process. Okay, so this evening, we're here to present the sketch plan. As Brianna mentioned, it depicts the general development pattern for all of Segment 1 and the general land uses for the full property, as well as preliminary plan for Segment 1A. A few items that I wanted to highlight, one is that we did process the PD amendment later last year to incorporate the dendritic planning principles that you are seeing in both the sketch plan and preliminary plan this evening. The dendritic planning essentially evaluates the natural drainages on the property and then works the plan around those natural drainages. So, in general, this style of planning relies less on engineered solutions and more utilizes the natural terrain. Overall, Segment 1 is providing about 14 acres more park and open space than was anticipated in the PD. And finally, no increase or additional units is being proposed with this application. Okay, so bigger picture, I think we all know where the property is, but just for reference, Tantera is located west of Matzenbacher in the current Anthology neighborhood, south of Hess, north of the extension of Stro Road, and east of the Rutter House Reservoir. And then, you saw this slide earlier, I won't go into it in too much detail, but you can see Segment A, B, C, those are the areas that we're talking about for the actual sketch plan. And then 1A in the light blue is the area for the preliminary plan. So, just for reference, this is the currently approved PD, and then over top, just to try and again, highlight the area that we're mostly dealing with this evening, I added a red dashed line that's kind of the approximate area of Segment 1. As Brianna mentioned, one of the things that did come out of the previous hearings is that some of the neighbors in the Horse Creek neighborhood would like us to work with South Metro Fire to see if we can relocate the currently approved fire station location that's in Segment 3 of Anthology. And I wanted to report that we have submitted another minor PD amendment to memorialize the change in the fire station location. We are proposing to relocate the fire station to the intersection of Chambers Road and Great Plain Way and pull it away from those neighbors, convert that area back, well, convert that area that was approved for a fire station to open space adjacent to the Horse Creek This exhibit depicts the overall sketch plan. So, in addition to the preservation of the primary drainages, we really think that the heart of this community is the community park. Again, the sketch plan proposes about 14 acres of additional park and open space as compared to the approved PD with no increase in the number of homes. And then, so this slide really shows the sketch plan on the top of the image and the approved PD below it. So, I hope you can see that the proposed sketch plan really follows and is consistent with the approved PD. And so, as part of working with staff through the sketch plan process and preliminary plan, we were tasked with putting together a pretty detailed open space park and tracking exhibit. It really tracks all of the park and open space areas within Segment 1. And again, through that process, you know, we've identified about 14 additional acres, which is really about an increase of about 10% of parks and open space in this area of the Tantera community. So, again, this will be really quick. The preliminary plan that we're reviewing this evening is the Segment 1A, just that blue area. And then, this next slide is an illustrative version of Segment 1A, again, depicting the 411 single-family homes and 53 townhomes. Okay, so bigger picture, I think we all know where the property is, but just for reference, Tantera is located west of Matzenbacher in the current Anthology neighborhood, south of Hess, north of the extension of Stro Road, and east of the Ruder House Reservoir. And then, you saw this slide earlier, I won't go into it in too much detail, but you can see segment A, B, C. Those are the areas that we're talking about for the actual sketch plan, and then 1A in the light blue is the area for the preliminary plan. So just for reference, this is the currently approved PD, and then over top, just to try and again highlight the area that we're mostly dealing with this evening, I added a red dashed line that's kind of the approximate area of segment one. As Brianna mentioned, one of the things that did come out of the previous hearings is that some of the neighbors in the Horse Creek neighborhood would like us to work with South Metro Fire to see if we can relocate the currently approved fire station location that's in segment three of Anthology, and I wanted to report that we have submitted another minor PD amendment to memorialize the change in the fire station location. We are proposing to relocate the fire station to the intersection of Chambers Road and Great Plain Way and pull it away from those neighbors, convert that area back, well, convert that area that was approved for a fire station to open space adjacent to the Horse Creek neighborhood. This exhibit depicts the overall sketch plan, so in addition to the preservation of the primary drainages, we really think that the heart of this community is the community park. Again, the sketch plan proposes about 14 acres of additional park and open space as compared to the approved PD with no increase in the number of homes. And then, so this slide really shows the sketch plan on the top of the image and the approved PD below it. So I hope you can see that the proposed sketch plan really follows and is consistent with the approved PD. And so, as part of working with staff through the sketch plan process and preliminary plan, we were tasked with putting together a pretty detailed open space park and tracking exhibit. It really tracks all of the park and open space areas within segment one. And again, through that process, you know, we've identified about 14 additional acres, which is really about an increase of about 10% of parks and open space in this area of the Tantera community. So again, this will be really quick, the preliminary plan that we're reviewing this evening is the segment 1A, just that blue area. And then, this next slide is an illustrative version of segment 1A, again depicting the 411 single-family homes and 53 townhomes. Again, the site design has been planned around the natural drainage corridors with integrated trail connections and parks also taking advantage of these natural areas. And then in general, the grading for the lots ends at the rear of the lots to protect the drainage and natural vegetation. So this slide really shows the three parks that are in segment 1A from the Parks Master Plan for the community. One of the exciting things again about it is the community park. It's over 30 acres in size, we think of it as about 30 acres of fun in the heart of Tantera. The park is connected to many acres of trails and open space. It will include a pool clubhouse with off-street parking, series of terraced iconic themed playgrounds, and I've got some images to show you, a trike track, bike trails, overlooks, shade shelters, outdoor events areas, large multipurpose turf areas. And we're really thrilled with the collaboration we've already had with the town of Parker in developing these initial concepts, and we're looking forward to continuing that collaboration in the more detailed design with the final plans. And then on the bottom of this slide are the two additional park areas that include play areas. Again, that iconic shelter I showed on the very first opening slide. Again, trails, turf play areas, benches, tables, bocce courts, workout equipment, et cetera. So, I had a wonderful animation to show you tonight, but I guess we're limited from a technological standpoint with Zoom, so. But anyways, as part of our design process, we really try to build pretty detailed models of the community to analyze the design and what it's going to kind of look like. So again, it's not possible to incorporate the animations in the presentation, so I just took some screenshots from it. This is a concept for the primary entry monument at the Stro Road and Chambers intersection. The sculptural element that's kind of flaring out there is essentially the community logo. It's really in an artful, three-dimensional interpretation. Then the next image starts to show you the new Chambers Road Bridge that will cross Oak Gulch. Oak Gulch has the great separated regional trail. Brianna mentioned it gets you all the way to Cherry Creek Trail. We are proposing some sort of stone monoliths adjacent to the bridge to just kind of give this community a little bit, you have a more unique feel, but the bridge itself has been designed to be consistent with the town's standards. And you can, I don't know if you can, but you should be able to see some of the homes in the distance on segment 1A in the background. So, next slide, we've kind of moved into the community now. We're focusing on a park integrated into the natural drainage area. You can kind of start to see some of the homes fronting the majority of the park, providing good visibility into the park. The park includes, you know, the play areas, looped trails. Next slide, you'll see more of one of the shade shelters, and it's all integrated. I guess the point of it is all integrated into the natural terrain. Yeah, so there you go. This is the same park looking in the opposite direction, again blending the park design with the natural terrain. And the next slide is just a little further down the drainage of the same park. So we've got, you know, trails up top and then trails, some trails come down towards the drainage, and this is just showing one of the ways that we can provide a crossing and still allow the natural flow to come through. So this is a secondary entry concept at Bramwell Road and Chambers Road. Again, trying to build that theme and highlighting the natural landscape feel with ornamental grass plantings and then using evergreen trees as the backdrop. And so this next slide is same area, just pulled back a little bit to give everyone a sense of the setting and starting to see some of the homes in the background there, buffered by the evergreen tree plantings. You're basically almost to Chambers here, and Bramwell's on your right. Okay, so the balance of these images are going to focus on that community park. This image is kind of looking over the pool area, and we recognize that'll be part of a separate site plan process. So the community park also includes pickleball courts and bocce courts. You can start to see some of the off-street parking. The, one of the trails coming through the park that connects to the community trails throughout the community. Next slide is, this is one of the large, well, this is the large iconic playground area. It includes a, some custom play equipment that's really kind of fun, it's that bird in the middle, you'll see it again, as well as the iconic shade shelters. So this image depicts really that custom play structure we're working on, it's a large hawk. You know, you could see in our, on our logo, the sort of theme with that. It includes a slide, some multi-level play areas. You can also sort of see one of the embankment slides to the right of the hawk there. Next slide, yep, okay. And just beside this area, a little bit above it, that really cool playground area we were just looking at, it's like a custom trike track. So basically, it's like a fun little racetrack for kids on trikes. It's trying to theme it and have a lot of interesting elements. Oh, sorry. And finally, looking back towards the playground area with the large, you can start to see the large multipurpose turf area in the background. And again, just kind of looking mostly at that themed playground area where the embankment slide is and the hawk is in the middle there. So hopefully this gives you a good sense of what we think is a really thoughtful design for this preliminary plan area. And then just to summarize, again, the proposals for a sketch plan that really details all of segment one, as well as for a preliminary plan for segment 1A. Again, overall, the proposed sketch plan increases the amount of park and open space by over 14 acres in segment one. It's about a 10% increase. And it also provides the guideline for the future design of segments B and C. The preliminary plan is consistent with the sketch plan and PD, and then finally, staff has recommended approval based on review of the approval criteria. So thank you for your time this evening, and we're happy to answer questions.
Mike, questions for Mr. Prestwich? Sorry, Rich.
I know, this came before us some time ago, and there were two concerns raised. One was about the fire station, which I really appreciate you addressing with the citizens and working with them to move that, to satisfy everybody. The other one, which really hasn't been brought up tonight, is about the schools. Well, one of them, I think especially the elementary school, that in most neighborhoods so far, it's a nightmare when the parents have to drop off or pick up their kids with a traffic issue. So I don't know if there's plans to address that in the future in this neighborhood?
Yeah, we are working with, with staff with the school district on, it's actually in segment B, but at, through those coordinated efforts, we've actually modified the road sections around the park to provide on-street parking and actually on three sides? I might be drawing a bit of a blank on it, but the point is, we're actually actively working with both engineering and the park, and the school district to facilitate that. And then if you notice, the school is actually on one of the collector roads, which will provide direct access out to Chambers. So part of the, part of the thought process was where it's located will help you get to, help get traffic dispersed quickly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The trails, are they going to be HOA-maintained and, or town of Parker?
Both. The regional trails will be dedicated to the, to the town, and they'll end up maintaining, which is really the north trail, which is along Oak Gulch. The trails internal to the property, I want to take this back a little bit because the community park will be dedicated to the town. So, I'm sorry, that's why it's a little bit of both. The trails that are inside of HOA tracks will be maintained by the HOA. The regional trail, which is being dedicated to the town, will be maintained by the town. And then the trails inside of that 30-acre community park that is being dedicated to the town would then also become the town's. All the trails outside of that would be HOA.
In your proposed community center, how many parking spots are you going to have?
We have, I knew you were going to ask that. We did a parking study for it, is it 84? So we actually were tasked with doing a parking study for not just the HOA facility, but for the park itself, to make sure they all worked together. And so, we can double-check this, but I think the number is 84 spaces.
And then, did you get agreement of as far as the distance from the fire station to where you want to put it now?
So we have been working, South Metro's been actively involved in reviewing not only the location, but we've actually provided them with some grading studies to make sure that from a grade standpoint, they can, they gave us two templates to fit on, on the new location, and we've shown them how both templates can fit, so that's why we think we're in pretty good shape there.
Okay, and the last question, I promise.
No.
Is your pool going to be open to the community or just strictly for your homeowners? When I say community, I mean there are schools that have swim teams, et cetera.
Right. It's open to the public.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Other questions?
I have just, I think, one right now. Do you, can you, my mic's, sorry. Can you tell me approximately how far the fire station was moved?
Would you, can you go back? It's got to be about a quarter mile?
Okay. And is there some buffer between, I mean, obviously there's houses and there's going to be some buildings and a lot of stuff between that and the, is it the Horse Creek community, so.
There we go. Yeah, I think that's about a quarter of a mile.
Okay, quarter mile, thank you.
Further questions? No. Seeing no further questions? Thank you, Mr. Prestwich?
Thank you.
And you have any further questions for Brianna? Okay. Once again, we, as, in a public hearing, we look for comments from the public, and we, again, I would like to explain that we take this as testimony, and then following any public comments, we will respond, or the staff will respond to those following the close of public comment. And so, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on this item before us, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Dezandro De Cal. I live at 12723 Buffington Trail. It's one of the new Anthology communities that's adjacent to the area that's being planned. I have one comment that this notice was not very helpful. It does not have enough information for us to, to understand what's going on in our neighborhood. I wish they had more of those planning maps and documentations in these. The question I have is what kind of ecological studies have been done? I've seen deers and birds, at least dozen different birds, and foxes in the backyard, and whether there have been any plans to either relocate them or leave some of the areas natural so they can have a natural habitat. The other question I have, just looking at some of the slides, is one of the paths on the, the natural drainage didn't look accessible to me. So, which raises question, you know, how, how much thought has been put into accessibility when they're designing this community? That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, sir.
My name is Glenda Wilson. I live at 17726 Emilia Drive in Anthology. And I would second what he said, I'm a very visual person, so having some more of those pictures would have been helpful. Our backyard does butt up to the one, segment 1C. So there is a very steep hill back there, and it looks like from the pictures, that's going to be kind of open space from what I saw, but our concern is just if that hill is going to be leveled at all. We're really concerned about drainage. Our sump pump works all the time, so drainage, if that hill is leveled, if it stays, I think that's a different question I may have in the future. But definitely drainage with that back hill on 1C. And then also, not necessarily natural habitat for the animals, I love the animals, but we have noticed with the current construction going on that currently coyotes and other animals are just getting closer to our home, and we do have animals, and Parker has us have the lovely split rail fence, so we really don't have a lot of protection. So just as we move forward, I just want to be mindful of weather-preserving areas for animals, but also, you know, seeing if there's a chance to rehouse or move them so that they don't just keep closing in on our homes. And then, I think that was it, natural terrain, drainage, and animals, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one person raising their hand on Zoom.
Okay.
And I have promoted Ian. Ian, can you unmute yourself and speak?
Ian, are you there? Ian? Hello?
I'm going to try and promote him to a panelist to see if that helps.
Okay.
Ian, try again.
Ian? Oh, there he is.
Hey, Ian.
Yay. Can't hear you. There's still no sound, no sound?
You're muted. I think he's going to send you a chat, Stacy.
Zoom volume not working, okay. Can you hear us, Ian? Just nod your head. Apparently not. I don't know what to do at this point. We got it.
Can he send the question on chat? If he has a question?
Can, would it be permissible for him to? Would it be permissible for Ian to type his question in the chat so that it can be conveyed to staff and to us?
Yes, Ian, if you can hear us, if you can chat, I don't know if the chat function's available, but if you can chat, we can read it out loud.
I don't think you can see it. But I don't know how he's going to see anything we put up either, because we don't have.
Stacy, do you have a piece of paper you can put the word chat on it?
Well, he can hear us, he just gave.
He must be hearing us through Facebook. And it looks like Dan, you're also on there, so if you would like to put a comment in chat, feel free as well.
We certainly apologize for the technical difficulties.
This is our first time doing it this way, so this is very unique.
Is anything coming through, Stacy?
Not yet, but it looks like he may still be typing.
Okay.
Can anybody suggest, if there's no one else in the room to do it, addressing the current questions and then talking back?
Uh, that, no, we can't do that.
I'm wondering if the engineering analysis for utility capacity, do you see that?
Okay, yes, so Ian just asked, I just want to reiterate the need for the fire station to move as part of the approval. I've been trying to tell staff for at least 20 minutes that the Zoom volume is not working. Need to allow us an opportunity to make additional comments also. And then Dan McFon also said, I am wondering if the engineering analysis for utility capacity included telecom, cellular, and broadband.
Okay. Okay, is? That was all? Okay. All right, is there any further public comment from the audience? No? All right, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. We need, do we need further information from staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I had some questions about some things that were raised. One of them was, does the, I, I, we don't see the notice that's sent out to everyone. Does that have a link to any documents or things like that that are provided to people who get it, so that if they want to go online, they could look at the same kind of track-it sort of information that's available for other projects?
So, that's a mailed paper copy, so there's no actual links in that, but it does give all the case numbers. We do have a standard template that shows you the general area, the location, and gives those case numbers, so that way you can go into track it to find more information, or contact the town for more information.
Does it give, like, the actual, what you would type into the bar in order to get to that particular thing? And if it doesn't, maybe it should?
I don't believe so, but I can double-check.
Okay, I think that would be useful, because the whole point of this is to be as transparent and to be as clear to other folks as possible, and, you know, at least knowing exactly where to go online, finding that, that's why we have the links in the, the reports that you give us, is that we could just, people can just go straight to those, those links. I think that would be useful. The other question that came up was regarding grading in the hill in Section 1C. Could you speak to that? I, I think I know the answer, but I'd like to have that discussed.
I'll let the applicant give more information.
So, to be honest, I mean, we're, we're focused on the prelim plan on 1A. I know there is grading in 1B, but I don't know, I'm happy to meet and find out exactly where her house is, because I don't, I don't know, I mean, Segment 1C has a relatively long boundary with, with homes around it. If it's the area that's, can we pull up a map? Well, anyways, if it's an area closest, furthest on the east, that hill is being preserved. If, but I don't want to say that and have it wrong. But there's a drainage, so I think it's gotta be the only hill.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll grab your contact info.
So, I'm assuming, are you going to answer the other questions to?
I was just gonna say, I should probably stay up here for this.
It's an Amber Alert.
It's an Amber Alert. Okay, we've all been alerted. Right, I'm sorry. So, can you speak to what the other chat had to offer, which was cellular, broadband?
Right, and so, so the engineering analysis does include all the telecoms. It does, they go out to those for referrals, so we'll be continuing to work with, with them. Fire station, I, I know, we know from, from Ian previously that he, he would, he's desperately, would like to get that pulled into this, but they're just, they're just two separate applications. There's nothing, we, we, we have formally submitted to move the fire station, but it's not a part of the sketch plan or Segment 1A.
Okay. So, if we vote on this tonight, I think this might be a, sorry, Brianna, it might be a you question. If we vote on this tonight, and for some reason, the fire station isn't, can't be moved, is it a part of this, or does it come back to us to take a second look at it? Are we voting on this without the fire station, is what it comes down to?
Yes. So, the fire station is part of Segment, currently, it's a part of Segment 2, Segment 3. We're looking to move it to Segment 2. So, that's outside of the realm of Segment 1 at this point. So, no matter what, when we do the rezoning for Segment, the entirety of Segment 2, you'll have another chance to look at it then. But, like I said, we do have a formal application that's currently under review. It's out for referral today, to move it to 2 before we continue to move forward with the entirety of Segment 2.
Okay.
Is, is there a chance that the fire station could be moved into Segment 1? Or is it gonna stay in 2 or 3?
I mean, that would be a pretty major change.
That's what I, yes, so it's not likely that it would.
Right.
Okay.
Is, is Segment 1, can it be serviced by a different fire service now until that station is approved?
Yeah, I mean, fire is, is on the referral agency, so they've definitely been studying this and providing comments.
Okay.
I had two other questions from, and I hope I don't get the name wrong, Dezen. One was about the notice. We're happy to provide whatever notice. I mean, we, links to the, to the files are great. Yes, all the ecological studies that are required through, through the process have been done. And of course, we are, part of this whole dendritic process is preserving those natural drainages. And then, as he noted, that, some of the trails, you know, where they're crossing the drainages, will not be ADA compliant, but in the upper areas, we, we follow all the ADA rules. So, if there's a picnic bench, for example, on a trail that's not ADA accessible, we need to have one on the upper level that is ADA accessible, so that there's equal amenities for both trail opportunities. It's not that dissimilar, really, if you go, you know, on, on a more rigorous kind of a hike, where you'll find areas that are just not ADA compliant. I think I got all of the questions?
Yep.
From, from the public.
The only question that hasn't been addressed is the question regarding animals being pushed into people's backyards, and the, and the question regarding what, what if any thing is being looked at or done, or is anything possible, or is that just a natural consequence of?
There, we don't have anything in our plans that would, would do that, that, just the, the environmental studies themselves. There are recommendations in the environmental studies, like if, if there happened to be a bird's nest, you can only do activities certain times of the year, et cetera, et cetera. But that's, that's really the extent of it. Had they identified something very significant, we would have had to incorporate that into our plans.
Brianna, do you have anything to add to this?
Yes, and preserving those dendritic areas will help keep those animals in those natural areas. They'll be preserved through the construction and into the future, but there isn't anything else in our code that requires any other sort of mitigation.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Covered all the questions.
Yeah. All right, then we will close the public hearing at 7:54. Planning Commissioner discussion?
I'm more inclined to go with motion number 2 at this point. I don't see a lot of, my concern is the fire station, and whether or not it'll be proved within this or not within this, and when it's gonna be moved, and that may raise some concerns. The second motion, Gary, if you look at your paperwork.
The 1 and 2 are the two motions. Both of those motions will be made.
There's two separate motions tonight.
That can be, right.
So, with the preliminary plans, Site 1 and B and C must be approved by Town Council.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm more inclined to go with the, the normal recommendation. Fire life safety did provide their approval and recommendation, not conditioned on having another fire station. I, I would be in support. I, I like the plan. I do like that we're addressing moving this fire station. I understand that's not part of this request, and I know that that's forthcoming. You know, so I'm, I, I am in support as, as presented.
I, I believe that there's been a lot of ecological studies done prior to the, even the beginning, at the very beginning of this process. So, you know, the folks that do those and who, those who review those studies, I'm pretty confident that we're kind of moving into their spot, and we have to learn to kind of coexist there. But I do like the fact that the fire station is being moved. I do like the fact that we are gonna see that before we have the final. And I know this is the preliminary sketch, so I'm more inclined to, I agree with Eric, I'd be more inclined to go with number 1 until we actually see the final plans.
I tend to agree with Kim and Eric about the fire station, because it, it's gonna be difficult to move, and somebody is not gonna like it where it's gonna go. So, you can't satisfy everybody 100%, but I think the applicant has made a good effort in doing something with the fire station, replacing it somewhere else in the community to, that, that were concerns raised by some other, other citizens that are actually not in the community. They're on the north side of Hess Road. So, I, I'd rather, I feel like going with the option 1 here, too.
Option, the choice between, I'm, I'm not sure why staff gave us two, two different motions.
It's two different things. It's the, the.
So, my.
Sketch plan and the preliminary plan, two separate.
Okay, so they are two separate, so we would, tonight, the motions would be both the first motion and the second motion, would both need to be passed, or some alternative that we would come up with, which I don't think anybody's got an alternative. I, I think there's a confusion on the panel that, that's 1 or 2 under recommended motions, and I think, under recommended motions, both motions are recommended, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I want to make sure I understood that. And looking at the, so, I, Eliana, are you suggesting that we only vote for one of the, that we only pass one of those recommended motions, or, I'm confused. Can you explain to me?
I'm gonna turn your mic on, too, Eliana.
So, I, I guess my question is, we, I would, I would be more comfortable approving the sketch plan with a condition that we see where the fire station is finally approved?
So, we can add that as a condition. I would add that as a condition under Item 1. So, that can be your recommendation, that it's Item 1 with the condition that before the next sketch plan gets approved for B and C, that we have the fire station rezoning.
Can we, can we do that, though? Because we're, we're talking about Segment 1 only tonight, and not anything to do with Segment 2, and that's where the fire station is proposed to go right now, is in Segment 2, right?
Mr. Fuser?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
So, staff would recommend against, it's the board, it's the commission's prerogative to recommend the condition. Staff would recommend against that condition. There's a separate application in process and running. The commission will see that application at public hearing, be able to review it and make a recommendation.
Okay, so that's a third than item.
What I'm saying is, we're rec, we're not, staff.
No, I know, not tonight, but it will be another item.
Completely separate item.
Okay.
The business before you is the sketch plan for Segment 1.
Okay.
And then, the preliminary plan for 1A.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Fuser.
I, I plan to support both recommended motions. I also have to say that I always enjoy the visuals that the developer brings us on this plan. It's just, they just make me smile, so thank you for that. But I will be supporting both recommended motions, and I am fully confident that the issue of the fire station is well at hand and will be dealt with as it's been discussed tonight.
I, I am certainly going to be in support of this motion. I appreciate the development teams reaching out to the community and looking, and South Metro, and looking for solutions to that. You know, having lived in this community for over 20 years now, that there was a lot of wildlife behind us before the development of Idlewild started, and they, they moved on somewhere, you know, they, they were around our yard, but they do, and, you know, we still have plenty of deer and rabbits. And then, finally, the, in terms of the drainage and the, the ADA, and, and meeting that, I, I've actually seen, like your diagram of the drainage. I've seen one of those in operation. It's in a park in Englewood, Colorado, and it's been there for years, and it's those same curbs, and I've seen people take wheelchairs across there, because they're, they're, the, the slats are close enough together that, you know, that the wheelchair wheels don't get caught in there. Now, somebody who's on crutches, whatever, that would be more difficult. But, I mean, I, you know, I've seen strollers go across there and all that. I take my grandkids there a lot, and I grew up right next to that park. But anyway, I, I'm certainly will be in support. So, do we have the first, a first motion?
Yes, Item 1, I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the requested Anthology North sketch plan for Segment 1A, 1B, and 1C.
I second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Ruth Ann. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the requested Anthology North sketch plan for Segment 1A, 1B, and 1C. Please signify your vote.
Oh, my bad. There we go.
And that passes unanimously. Do we have a motion for the second part of this?
Item 2, under recommended motions, I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the requested Anthology North preliminary plan for Segment 1A, subject to the following conditions. One condition. You want me to read that condition also?
Yes.
The preliminary plans for the Segment 1B and 1C must be approved by Town Council prior to recordation of the first final plat for Segment 1A, as outlined in the partial waiver resolution, amended resolution 21-022, as amended.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Eric, and I have to find the motion.
Here.
That Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve, oh boy, now we can't see it.
There you go.
The requested Anthology North preliminary plan for Segment 1A, subject to the following conditions. The preliminary plans for Segment 1B and 1C must be approved by Town Council prior to the recordation of the first final plat of Segment 1A, as outlined in the, in the partial waiver resolution, amendment resolution 21-022, as amended. Please record your vote. Thank you, Ruth Ann.
No worries.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Brianna. Okay, next. Any staff items?
There are no staff items tonight, but you do have one Planning Commission item.
Right, yeah, we do. I've been preparing all evening for this. So, anyway, our task tonight is to elect, select a vice chair and an acting vice chair. Now, I was taught by my mentor, Rosemary Sitzma, how to do this correctly. And I'm gonna do it correctly.
These are our ballots.
These are our ballots.
Yeah, first, we have nominations.
I'd move to nominate Eliana as the vice chair.
I move to nominate Richard as the acting vice chair.
Well, we can only do one at a time.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
My brain can't handle two at a time. So, first one, we, we have a single nomination for vice.
So, are we putting yes down on the paper?
Well, I don't know.
Maybe we don't need to do anything, we can just say.
So, it's by acclamation?
I, I move to nominate Eliana.
I second your, your motion to nominate Eliana as vice chair.
And we'll just do a voice vote? I don't think we need to do a.
No.
Aye.
Chris, do we need to do a?
Aye.
We never have before. Yeah, okay.
Are you allowed to vote for yourself?
I don't know.
I'd vote yes if I were you.
Flying blind here. All right, well, we passed six of us, 6-0. Eliana is the vice chair. Welcome to the big chair. And next.
You're moving on.
Yeah, the acting vice chair. Do we have nominations?
I nominate Richard as acting vice chair.
I'll second.
Aye.
All right, we just, let's vote by acclamation, whatever, aye.
Aye.
That's been voted in by acclamation, so Richard is acting vice chair, thank you.
Assistant boss.
All in my paper tearing was not worth anything. Gotta save that for another year.
Pass your papers. Richard's keeping his paper.
Yeah, I know, it's nice. Chris gave me the paper. All right, finally, our last thing, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann. It's been moved by Ruth Ann and seconded by Eric that we adjourn the meeting at 8:06. And we shall. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to log out.
And vote yes to leave.
Yeah, vote yes for staff items.